This is the Planning Commission for June 8th. And we have a few housekeeping items first. If any audience member wished to speak on an item, and I think several of you have already done that, if you wish to speak to an item, there's some consent, oh, consent forms. There's some speaker request forms over there on the wall. And fill those out and give it to somebody from the staff and they'll give it to us so you can speak to that item. If anyone in the audience has a cellphone, and we request that you shut those off or take your phone call out in the hallway so you don't disrupt the meeting. We appreciate that. We'll start with the consent calendar. Items one through six have been placed on the consent calendar and may be approved as a group. Action will be taken on all consent items in accordance with staff's recommendation by a single vote. Any item may be removed from the consent calendar by any Planning Commission member, staff member, or audience member for separate consideration at this time. The findings of this Planning Commission are recommendation to the City Council. The City Council will make a final exception, a final decision with the exception of the following items. Item five, seventeen PD zero two zero. And the rest will be on the consent calendar for the, and approved by the Planning Commission if so done. So, does anybody from the staff wish to remove an item? Three and four, okay. Are there any items from the Planning Commission that they wish to remove? Okay, are there any audience members who have an item that they wish to remove other than three and four? Okay, I will take a motion to approve the consent calendar with the exception of item three and four. Kim makes a motion and Mike seconded it. Okay, all those in favor of that motion say aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, we will now take item three.
Item three is a preliminary subdivision plan to create one hundred and thirty-two residential lots. This is property located south of Katrin Boulevard and east of Mount Rushmore Road. The applicant has requested that this item be continued for two meetings, which would put this to the July 6th Planning Commission meeting, and that would be our recommendation.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Galen made a motion and Mike seconded it. Okay, all those in favor of that motion to continue to July 6th say aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, we are now at item four.
Item four is seventeen RZ zero two one, a rezoning request from General Agriculture District to Office Commercial District. It's a three point eight six acre parcel of property located on the southeast corner of Enchantment Road and Mount Rushmore Road. Currently, the property is void of any structural development, and the future land use is identified as employment center, and Mount Rushmore Road is an entrance corridor. The Office Commercial District is a suitable land use designation for the Employment Center District, as identified in the city's adopted comprehensive plan. Giving you an idea of where it's located on the south side of the city. Here we have the rezoning sign posted. You can see it's a field right now, looking west towards Mount Rushmore Road along Enchantment To the south and west. This is looking at Enchantment Road towards Mount Rushmore Road to the north. Back along Enchantment Road to the east. And there's a residential neighborhood back in that area. We pulled this item from the consent calendar because we have received a lot of calls from the neighbors with interest in what is being done. But because the proposed rezoning request is in compliance with the comprehensive plan, staff is recommending that the rezoning request be approved. Are there any questions for staff at this time?
Do I hear any questions from staff? Okay, we do have some speaker request forms on this, and so I'll call your name, and if you wish to speak to this item, just come to the podium and state your name and address. Nancy Jensen, did you want to speak?
Yes, good morning. I'm Nancy Jensen. I am the lady who's lived in the neighborhood the longest, that would be around forty-five years. So I've seen a lot of things change up there. We are not in opposition to this, we think it's okay. We do have lots of concerns, of course, about what's going to happen. As you noticed on the picture, across the street is the church. On each, a lot of churches around in the area, and a lot of people in that area. Enchanted Hills is made up of several hundred homes. And this is our main entrance into this neighborhood. We would like to see something there that would fit right in and meld right in so it doesn't change the complexion of the neighborhood. It's, it's a very emotional thing for me, of course, after I've lived there all these years. But we have many concerns, and I did not know that this was going to be pulled from the, for future discussion and further discussions, so I don't want to take a lot of time because we have traffic concerns, stoplight concerns, and just how this is going to change the character of our neighborhood. At three point eight acres is not a big piece of ground, but it seems like three point eight acres can really get pretty messy after watching some of the developments that I'm seeing going on around us. So I've just mentioned that. At this point, we have been trying to learn more about this project and this development, but most of the questions that we've asked have been pretty vaguely answered, very general generalities. So it is concerning that these people, we'd like to know what they're really thinking of doing there. I've heard something about a medical, physical therapy, but that's pretty vague. I, and maybe this has already been done, would like to request that a planned development designation be placed on this project. This designation would allow the opportunity for future oversight as the planned and land use develops. And that way, that would allow us neighbors to participate, because we got neighbors on both sides, and we're not opposed to office commercial. But there's an awful lot of things you can do with office commercial that are a little unsettling for me. But, so that's my, my general feelings about the subject, and I hope that we can go ahead and work further through this as we go along. So that's all I have to say, and thank you.
Thanks Nancy.
I'm a neighbor to Nancy, I live right behind her.
Steve, could you just state your name and address?
Steve Dennison, thirteen sixteen Panorama Circle.
Thank you.
And my panorama is kind of fading into the sunset. I have some of the same concerns that Nancy has. I've lived up there for thirty-some years, and one of the, couple of the things that I have a concern about, can you put my map up? The map shows that, I believe it's Plains Vista Court, comes down on the south side where the arrow is. My concern is, is that going to go into the highway as an entrance exit? Or are all the traffic going to come down Enchantment Road? My concern is, is the amount of traffic that we already have coming up and down Highway sixteen and going down Enchantment Road to get to Walmart is already so heavy that sometimes it takes four or five minutes just to get out onto the highway, or to come across the highway. On the southbound lane, there is a left-hand turn lane, which is a safety feature that was badly needed. We've already had one death fatality at Enchantment Road and Highway sixteen. My recommendation is that before any development goes in there, they need to put a right-hand turn lane coming from the south for people to get in. And a stoplight at that corner would sure be dandy to slow that traffic down. When you're coming from the south to turn in Enchantment Road, you should have your blinker on at Peaceful Pines Nursing Home because people are driving seventy miles an hour. And it's really easy for them to rear-end you. I'm not opposed to the development, but my concern is, is another one. I think when the city and us people in Enchanted Hills were fighting Walmart coming in to the south where Peaceful Pines is, that part of the agreement was that no buildings along the highway would be more than two stories high. And in Office Commercial, they're allowed to put a three-story building in there. I think we need to hold it at two stories. At this time, that's the only comments I have. Some ideas for you to think about before this gets passed. Thank you.
Thanks Steve. Okay, Richard Edelen, if I pronounced that right, I hope.
Good morning. Richard Edelen, fourteen ten Enchantment Road. I guess I'm the new guy in the area, I've been there ten years. My concerns have been voiced. I guess I have a question. When will they notify us of the exact building that's going in, or the structures? What's the process and the timeframe?
I'll let Vicki answer that question for you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. If the property is rezoned to Office Commercial District, then a building permit could be issued by the city for any use that is a permitted use in the Office Commercial District. If they were to propose a use that is a conditional use, then a conditional use permit application would need to be submitted, which would trigger neighborhood notification, and the same boundary of those that were notified for the rezon would also be notified for the conditional use permit. Otherwise, just rezoning it to Office Commercial District does not trigger any neighborhood notification for future development.
Okay. So do they notify you of their building intent at this time, and is that public knowledge as far as the structure type?
Madam Chair.
Go for it.
To rezon property doesn't require that they commit and, and limit themselves to a particular use, and of course, the property could be sold in the future, and someone else could walk in and have a use that we don't know about today. It would just fall within the same category, those that are permitted and those that are conditional. I believe, though, that the applicant's consultant is in the audience, and maybe at the end of discussion, the chair would like to hear from the applicant's consultant, and I don't know if they're ready to divulge full information, but that's a good question for the neighborhood.
Sure, that'd be great to learn as soon as we can. So I had the same concerns about, you know, access. That's a big concern of mine. I have children. I live, I guess possibly the second closest house to the property, and they ride their bikes, and we did gain a lot of traffic with Walmart. So I'm really concerned about will there be an access to this lot if it is an employment center on Enchantment Road. That's something that I would like to be appraised of, and I think all of us would be very, would like to know that information. And then, you know, the maximum roof height of the project and exterior lighting was concerns that I had also. So I think those will be answered in the future, but as soon as that can be passed along, that would be, that would be appreciated. So those are my concerns.
Thank you, Richard. Chris Olney, if you're, is that who's in the audience? I don't know that person, but somebody from ARC here? Oh, there is. Would you like to answer any of those questions for them? Thank you.
Donovan Broberg, ARC International.
Yes Donovan.
Yeah, Chris is out of the state today. We can certainly kind of let you know where we are in the process. We've been assisting the owner of the property over this last year for kind of a mixed use, all relating to athletic training and physical wellness, and the related medical aspects of that. At this time, there isn't a strong commitment to a identified use. The first step is the rezoning. And a couple of thoughts along the way was the, the first thought for a number of months was to pursue general commercial rezon. And the owner of the property is very sympathetic to how he will fit into this neighborhood as well. And after consultation with the city staff, there was encouragement that we lean away from general commercial and consider office commercial, which is certainly a more narrowed use as to the options, and it eliminates certain things, you know, that nobody desires within that neighborhood, including this owner, you know, casinos, alcohol sales, those types of things. And so, pursuing the office commercial, the idea of three stories, certainly that might be allowed, but it's certainly not the intent. It's pretty much a one-story facility. Certainly could be a low-rise, two-story function in a, in some of the potential uses, but the primary uses being considered and laid out are one-story uses. And, and we imagine that it will take a, at a minimum, a conditional use permit to pursue a building permit. And so, as Vicki identified, that will trigger a public process and a notification, and we look forward to working with neighbors to present what the, what the development will, will look like. Very concerned about the, the traffic and the patterns and such around there, and how, how that will, will work, and how it, so we've been working with the DOT. In fact, I have a meeting later this morning with them in the same regards in understanding what their long-range plans are. And they, they have some very specific long-range considerations for that intersection. And I think they're already ahead of that game, and we want to kind of join in and see how that can impact a positive development, so. Are there any other questions?
I don't think so at this point, but I appreciate you getting up and visiting with us, and if there's a direct question for you, maybe we'll pull you back up to the, to the podium, though. Thanks Donovan. Okay, are there any questions from the committee? Galen made the motion, do I hear a second? Thank you, Kim.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I just wanted to clarify that before the Planning Commission today is a rezon application to rezon property to Office Commercial. The tools that we have in our toolbox as a part of a building permit review would look at height, setback, parking. Approach locations would be per the Infrastructure Design Criteria Manual. Those limitations are in place just for the building permit review application itself. The Planning Commission has the option today of approving the rezon as presented, or if it is the determination of the Planning Commission that additional review by you would be a benefit to the neighborhood to look at the specifics relating to not only the use, but potentially the traffic, and the traffic patterns that may be created by this use, then you could approve the rezon in conjunction with the plan development designation. That would allow everything to go forward today. It would, though, require the applicant to bring forward another public application for your review and the public's review as well. So those are the two options on the table. I just wanted to make that clarification.
Thank you Vicki. At this time, the motion is just to have the straight rezon, just go to Office Commercial. So if anybody wants to add that plan development, you'd have to amend the motion or make a substitute motion, so. Okay, so Rachel has made a substitute motion to approve the, the item with a plan development added on to that. Is there a second to that motion? Oh, and Mike seconded that motion. Okay, so then, the motion now on the floor is to have this go to Office Commercial and also include a plan development on that. Okay, is there any other comments or questions?
I think the traffic is very important to be aware of, and I, I do think that as this moves forward, and with all that has happened up there, and what with the neighborhood, I think it's a very good thing to just be aware of that traffic. So with that said, I will vote with the amendment so that we can...
Okay, thanks Mike. I do have one quick question. Is this an entrance corridor so that they have to abide by unification things and stuff?
Madam Chair, it is an entrance corridor. The recommendations of the comprehensive plan will be reviewed by staff and brought forward as a part of what we recommend to you. But remember, until the ordinance is amended, those are just recommendations.
True, thank you. Okay, oh, Galen, you had a comment.
Yeah, thank you. Just want to clarify, by putting this to plan development, what does that mean for like a traffic study? Can they do, can you clarify again what can be done in regards to traffic by putting it into a plan development? Because I'm still a little hesitant to force it into a plan development.
The Infrastructure Design Criteria Manual states that if a use triggers one hundred peak hour demand trips, or a hundred and fifty residential units, that a traffic impact study is required prior to issuance of that building permit. And we've got that tool in the toolbox whether we're looking at a building permit or a plan development. So if this particular use should meet that threshold, then as a part of a plan development, a traffic impact study would be submitted. The plan development itself does not trigger the traffic impact study.
So even if they pull a building permit, they still would have to look at the traffic impact?
Correct.
And then at that point, then potential changes could be made?
Correct.
Before issuance of the building permit.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Potentially, one of the benefits, let's say, if you do put it in a plan development, there are several options for approaches due to separation from other approaches and street intersections that we can review and require as a part of the Infrastructure Design Criteria Manual. On the Planning Commission, if this isn't a plan development designation, if you believe that some of the traffic patterns that may be created as a result of the use, that the approach should be limited to one of those two streets, or pushed back for more, you could go beyond what we would have the authority to require as a building permit to address some of those concerns.
Thank you.
Height also would be something. Remember, three stories or thirty-five feet. So if the, considering the neighborhood is really the height of the building, not so much the story of the, how many stories there are, then that is also something that could be looked at as a part of a plan development.
Okay, thank you. And, and also signage, I would think would qualify. Okay, any other comments or concerns? Okay, seeing on the motion on the floor is to approve this item four, to go from general commercial to office commercial with a plan development designation. Okay, all those in favor say aye? Opposed?
No.
All, the motion passes with one no from Galen. Okay, thank you for coming, all you that wanted to speak to this item. Okay, we are now going to the regular items. Item number...
Item number seven is a major amendment to a plan development to reduce setbacks to a retaining wall. Property's located at three five oh five Powderhorn Circle, and is a low-density residential district. It's in the Chapel Valley neighborhood. Aerial view, it's full, developed area. Property surrounding it is owned by the Chapel Valley Homeowners Association, and the applicant is proposing to fix a failing retaining wall and replace it with a retaining wall that measures between five and eight feet in height. So we're fixing an existing condition. Future land use is low-density neighborhood, and this gives you an idea of where it is located in relation to Jackson Boulevard and Chapel Lane. Here we have a site plan. One of the, one issue we have is, one of our stipulations of approval was to reduce the rear yard setback from twenty-five feet to six feet. It's actually six inches. So we're going to recommend to revise that stipulation to read from twenty-five feet to six inches rather than six feet. The retaining wall, oop, long screen, is located along the north and west. The applicant has obtained an easement from the Chapel Valley Homeowners Association to have the footings encroaching to this open area that is owned by the association. Here we have some of the pictures from the applicant showing the existing retaining wall, and how it's buckling and fencing is, is losing its way. And so the idea is to replace that retaining wall with a single wall that is five, between five and eight feet in height. Here's a picture of the property with sign posted. This is located on a private cul-de-sac off of Powderhorn Circle, and these are the adjacent dwellings on that cul-de-sac. And directly to the east, and then along Powderhorn Circle to the south and to the So this is a major amendment to a plan development to fix an existing retaining wall which is failing. They do have the access easement with the adjacent property. It's an improvement to the property and the neighborhood, and staff's recommending that the major amendment be approved with the revised stipulation number two, to stay from twenty-five feet to six inches. Are there any questions for staff at this time?
Yes, Kurt.
Are they just replacing it in place, or are they moving it closer and further into the setbacks?
I'll get the applicant to...
Hi, Jeff Collins. I'm the property owner. We are intending to put on the part that it was, is six inches, we're putting it right where that wall is. As it goes along the side yard, we're going to build in back of it, but we won't be encroaching any closer. We'll be within our setback then, but we're going to try and put it right as close as to the existing wall as we can. It's that, it holds up our yard. So if we take it back, we're worried it's going to fall, so our intent is to build as close as we can to that wall, and then backfill it behind it so that it supports it.
So it's been within the, violating the setback rules currently, right?
Correct. It, it's, we bought it in two thousand and four, and that's where it was.
All right, I don't have anything else.
Thank you Kurt. Anyone else? I'll look for a motion. Okay, and Gerald seconded the motion to approve the application for a major amendment to a plan development to reduce the setback for retaining wall. Any other comments? All those in favor of that motion say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We are at item eight.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Item eight is a major amendment to a plan development to revise a medical facility that you just approved in March of this year. And this is a facility that's to provide sports, physical therapy, and is a part of the regional hospitals outreach. It is located at the southeast corner of Katrin Boulevard and Mount Rushmore Road, and with that, I'd like to show you some slides. An aerial of the property, you can see it's currently undeveloped. This is showing the future land use of the property. It's a mixed-use commercial. So this is one of the uses that we would like to see along one of our entrance corridors. Again, showing the arterial streets in blue of Katrin Boulevard and Mount Rushmore Road. Access will come off of Healing Way, and then you can see this little cul-de-sac street that extends to the west that will serve as the primary access to the property. And because of the orthopedes development further south, this is really taking on a character of, of medical facility flair, and that's certainly something that we like to see grouped together. It just helps those that travel to our community looking for these kinds of uses. The layout of the property, as we look at this, if you do remember what you just approved in March, you won't really notice the changes that they're proposing. The previous plan development was for two phases. Because of budget constraints, they are no longer going to build the second phase at this time. They were, however, going to provide the parking for both phases right up front because it's obviously cheaper to do that all at one time. So they have brought this amendment forward to reduce the number of parking spaces that would be provided with this phase, to change some of the exterior facade, still keeping in character and design of what was previously approved, and to remove trees from the landscape islands. They noted that because of the size of the islands, it's difficult to maintain those trees in a live state. It's also areas of snow removal in the winter, and in lieu of that, they are moving their landscaping to the pedestrian walkway, and you can see that wider boulevard that extends east to west through the parking lot, and that will be tree-lined. There's also some courtyards that are visible from Katron Boulevard and Mount Rushmore Road that will have more trees, and then they are providing additional trees along the perimeter. Looking at the property as a whole, placing those trees in these new designations will really have more of a visual impact than sporadically putting them throughout the parking lot. Because that pedestrian walkway is as wide as it is, it will truly help break up that hardscape that's created by that spance of pavement. So we are in support of that as well. Please note that in addition to not providing the parking for Phase Two, they've also brought forth parking calculations that they feel are appropriate for the staffing and patient count and shared use of the facility and shared staffing for those that are receiving that physical therapy. And they have identified that at maximum, they believe they would need 274 spaces. If we just look at the floor plan, do the calculation based on the parking regulations, it equates to 383. They are proposing to provide 320, which is a 63 space reduction from what the ordinance says, but it still exceeds what their use calculation identifies is needed for the site. When we have these properties that are as isolated as this, if there is ever a shortfall of parking, it really just hurts them. There's no street parking. They're not going to go next door and walk over, so this is really self-monitoring. So with that being said, staff is recommending that the major amendment be approved and that the exception to revise the exterior facade be approved, that the exception to remove the trees from the landscape islands be approved in conjunction with this new landscape plan being implemented, and that the reduction in parking from 383 be approved with the stipulation that a minimum of 320 parking spaces be provided. With that, if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Okay, thank you. Any comments? Mike?
With the parking, are there people that are going to stay overnight at this? Or is it just basically physical therapy, do we know, or...
Madam Chair, there, this is functioning for patients that would have hospital bed needs. So that calculation is in there, and they have addressed that in their calculation.
As I go to the hospital right now, I find it, and now I know they're under construction, but even before the, the help and the patients had trouble finding parking, I kind of cringe at the thought of reducing the parking, although it is something that they, it's to them, and it doesn't affect any other businesses. It's still, that parking is, if you have to go to the hospital, if you have to go into that kind of a facility, I think we should keep the parking as much as we can just to keep those patients that are already in a little bit of a tough situation, they're not fighting for parking. I cringe at the thought of reducing that parking.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
So we had a rather long discussion with the applicants about that very issue. And a part of the services that will be provided here will alleviate some of the services that are currently being offered at their facility on Fifth Street, and will move them to this facility where you've got the specialized staff and the hospital environment to better serve their needs. When, and I believe that their parking calculation showing the staffing for the hospital stays versus the physical therapy stays, they have factored in those amount of parking spaces that may be required for family. And that's really where we kind of start getting into a crunch is when we have the visitors coming in and not knowing where to park. So looking at this, this reduction is less than 20% of what would otherwise be required, and knowing that they did do the historic counts of what they feel are needed at Rapid City Regional now, and they've increased that on this site anticipating that there may be some parking demand that they're not aware of. So again, staff is recommending that this be approved.
Okay, is that it? Mike?
I'll probably be voting no, but I just think that parking is a problem, especially when I watch what the hospital has done. And if they're moving people to it, they're still having the problem. And I think it's something that can be addressed now versus waiting until it is a problem. So they, the help up there, I talked to some of the help, and they struggle with the parking that they have, and they have for years trying to find parking, and they park in the North Forty, and we might have them parking in the trees, I don't know.
Thank you. Kurt?
You know, and the, you know, the criteria, you know, has certain parking regulations, and it, it's based on just an average. What they've done here is they've shown specifically what they're going to be using and how many people would need to park. And, you know, they've come up with, you know, around 250. They put a safety factor on that, come up with 275, something like that. And they're providing 320, so they're, they're actually providing more than what they need. Granted, it's less than what the criteria says it should be, but that's based on just averages of, it could be any type of facility, you know, that's related to this. So I think showing specifically what they need, bumping it up with a safety factor, plus adding more than that, to me seems like it should be more than adequate. At the beginning, you said something about it being a two-phase development and that this did not include parking for that second phase. Is that correct?
Madam Chair, the plan development that you approved in March did have two phases, but because of budget constraints, Phase Two is off the table. They were going to provide parking for both Phase One and Two, and in order to bring those costs down, they have amended the plan development to refuse, to remove Phase Two and then provide parking for just Phase One.
So this is just parking for Phase One? The, the 383 is also, is just for Phase One, and if they went to Phase Two, there'd be even more requirement for parking?
If they should in the future find the funding to, again, put the expansion back on the table, they would have to bring in a major amendment to the plan development, and we would be having the discussion regarding parking for that phase.
So they might have to expand that parking at that time?
They would have to provide parking for Phase Two at that time.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Thanks, Kurt. Kim?
I'm just going to agree with what Kurt said. I think the owner did a great job specifying how many parking stalls are needed, and I think we need to trust that they know what businesses and know what staff and patient needs are, so I'm going to be in support of this change.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Okay, Galen made the motion, and Kurt seconded that motion to approve. So the motion on the floor is for the approval of the major amendment to a plan development overlay to reduce the parking. And it includes all the stipulations as noted in the staff report.
Correct.
Okay. All those in favor of that motion, say aye? Opposed? Motion passes with Mike Klosny voting no. Okay, we are at item number nine.
Item number nine is a final plan development overlay to construct a hotel in the general commercial district. Proposed hotel is four stories in height and 102 rooms, and they are requesting two exceptions. Properties located on Luna Avenue. You can see just south of Rushmore Crossing, zone general commercial district, as are the properties to the north, south, east, and west. Currently, the property is void of structural development, and a lot of the properties as well. You can see this is the backside of the Walmart on La Crosse Street, and then Pizza Ranch to the north and Rushmore Crossing over here to the north and east. Future land use is a mixed-use commercial. And we can see Luna Avenue is identified as a collector's street. East Anamosa Street to the south is an arterial, and here you can see this is the Rushmore Crossing Regional Activity Center. Site plan showing the proposed development. The, one of the exceptions the applicant is requesting is to reduce the parking aisle width for about four parking spaces in front of the hotel from 26 feet to 24 feet. The applicant has indicated that they'll be signing those as being available for compact cars, and with that, they'll still be suitable or adequate width for two-way traffic circulation as well as maneuvering compact cars. And that's reflected in the stipulation of approval of the final plan development. Landscape plan for the proposed development showing trees along that collector's street, Luna. Second exception that is being requested is to allow a height of four stories and 50 feet in lieu of maximum height allowed of 45 feet. If you can see right here, this architectural detail at the front of the hotel, that's what's getting to the 45 feet, or 50 feet. The rest of the, the structure is at that 45-foot height. So it's just for this small piece of the building, and for that, staff is recommending the exception be approved. More elevations showing exactly, you know, this is the area, it's about 38 feet in width. It would be on that south side facing into the parking lot. View looking into the property from Luna Avenue to the east, and you can see the rooftops of Rushmore Crossing along there. Looking towards East Anamosa Street and towards Eglin to the north and the backside of Sam's Club. And that's looking directly to the west at the backside of the Walmart on La Crosse. And again, looking out towards Rushmore Crossing in the distance. Staff is recommending that the final plan development be approved. Are there any questions for staff at this time?
I don't see any right now. Okay, Galen made a motion to approve, and Kim seconded. The motion on the floor is to approve the initial, oh, sorry. Okay, John.
Can you put that front entrance where they're looking at the reduction in parking? So isn't that where you check in right there?
So this is a boulevard and a canopy over the entrance, so the entrance will be right there. Or this is the way to get into the entrance. So any vehicles pulling in to stop and get out and go check, check in will be on this side of the boulevard, the north side of the boulevard, and through traffic will probably go through there. Like I said, one of the stipulations of approval is that those four parking spaces be signed for compact vehicles because we don't want those big 22, 24-foot-long pickup trucks sticking out and blocking that traffic flow.
And so which four are you referring to exactly?
The ones right in here.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, any further comments or questions? Okay, seeing none, the motion on the floor is approval of the initial and final plan development overlay to allow a hotel in general commercial district with these stipulations as identified in the staff report. So all those in favor, say aye? Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, we're at item 10.
Item number 10 is a major amendment to a plan development to allow a digital reader board sign. Just to let you know, this item is before the planning commission because staff has been told to bring forward digital reader board signs if they're located in a conditional use permit or a plan development for the planning commission to review. Property is located on Marlin Drive and Elkvale Road, zoned office commercial district. In July of last year, a final plan development overlay to allow a church was approved. At that time, they did not identify a digital reader board, and thus the major amendment. Aerials view of the property and adjacent developments, we have a single-family residential neighborhood to the east and Elkvale Road to the west. Future land use of the property is identified as employment center, and Elkvale Road is identified as an entrance corridor into the city. As we've seen before, the entrance corridor promotes reducing the visual impact of signage and eliminating pole signage, et cetera. However, that is not a requirement of the zoning ordinance. The zoning ordinance allows 40-foot, 45-foot-high pole sign, and in this case, up to 1,200 square feet of signage. The applicant is proposing a digital reader board on this Elkvale Road corridor measuring nine by five feet on two sides, so for a total of 90 square feet. Giving you an idea of the major street plan, Marlin is identified as a collector's street, Elkvale is a arterial. This is signage that was approved with the final plan development, is not a digital reader board. It's a monument site, it's located on Marlin Drive. It's not one that we're reviewing right now, it was already approved. This is the elevation of the proposed digital LED message sign showing that it's 11 feet in height. And then with that angle, both sides of the sign are nine by five for a total of 90 square feet. Site plan, here's the location of the previously approved monument sign located on Marlin across from this residential neighborhood to the east. The proposed electronic message board sign is located on that west side of the property and should be buffered from the residential neighborhood by the structure of the church. However, the proposed location of the sign, it either needs to be 10 feet above ground level in order to be on the property line, or it needs to be set back 10 feet from the property line. So there's, prior to, you know, if this gets approved prior to issuance of a sign permit, they'll have to make those revisions. Here's a look at the church which is currently under construction, looking from Marlin Drive west along Marlin Drive to the north. And here's some shots of the residential neighborhood to the east. Our main concern on this is protecting that residential neighborhood, getting the church in there. I've definitely seen a lot more calls about putting up fencing and, and traffic issues in the area that are potential. Looking along Marlin Drive back towards Minnesota to the south. And then this is on that west side of the building. Here you can see the backside of the church, and Elkvale Road is up in this area. So they do need some height in order to be visible from the road for that proposed sign. Again, backside of the property looking north, and Elkvale is right along here. And then looking at the structure of the church and from that, on that west side. So if the planning commission determines that the electronic reader board sign is appropriate, staff would recommend to approve in, with the stipulations noted in the staff report. Are there any questions for staff at this time? Are there any questions for staff at this time?
I don't see any questions. I guess, before, go ahead. Okay. Okay, Galen's made a motion to approve, and Gerald's made a, seconded that motion to approve this item. I guess I, I do have a comment, maybe not so much a question. Are they still going to have the, the sign in the front, the monument sign? They're not replacing that, they're just adding another sign, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. I'm not going to vote on this as a chair, but I, I just feel, you know, signage is, is something that bothers me when it's electronic, and if you're going down 60 miles an hour, past a church that's down there, and, you know, what are they going to achieve by doing that, I guess? And that's not a comment, a question for staff. I mean, you know, Sunday schools at, at 6:00 to 5:00 on Monday through Friday or something, and you're whipping through, I guess people might notice that, but it just seems odd to me to have that on that street, but that's just my comment, I just wonder about that. Rachel, you have a comment?
Yeah, I, I'm kind of with you on this one. I don't know why you would have a, a large message board along a very, you know, fast-paced road. I mean, I just, they're not selling anything necessarily, not that that would make it okay, but to have an electronic reader sign, and, and it would have to be rather large or rather high up in order for people to even see it. I'm not really for this one.
Okay, thanks, Rachel. Carla, you had a comment?
I just wanted to, since you mentioned not voting on the item as chair, actually, you should vote, or, so, I guess make up your mind, but I think that's a rule at the council level for the mayor, but in planning commission, the chair votes.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. Mike?
I likewise would rather not see this sign. I don't know the necessity of it. I guess I could see it possibly on the side of the building, possibly. We've had schools that have put them up, and they've been required to make them less intense. Now, obviously, they're in neighborhoods, and maybe that, that won't affect this at this time, because it's on the backside, as I understand it, so it's not going to be facing the neighborhood, is, is that correct? There's no neighborhoods that are going to be affected. So, from that standpoint, it's not necessary to have it where it's timed to where it is not intense. I just don't see the need. I likewise feel it's not a necessary item to have to get their information out, and I would like to not see it, but I will be voting no.
Okay, thank you. My screen just went blank, so I don't know who is next. Pardon? Ah, thank you. Galen?
Thank you. So, I think they've done a good job keeping the sign to about as small as they need it for their purposes, and, you know, they, obviously, it could have gone a lot larger, so, just appreciate that. They didn't go any larger than they did. Can you maybe talk to, you mentioned, since it's so close to the property line, they may have to either raise the height or bring it back 10 feet, can you?
Yeah, so, the sign code requires a, if the pole sign is raised above the ground on poles, that there needs to be a clearance of 10 feet, and then, it could be on the property line, or if it's going to be lower than that, it needs to be set back 10 feet from the property line.
Have they submitted plans to show what they, what they plan to do for that? Just curious.
The applicant has not indicated how they're going to proceed with that.
That's fine.
Okay. Vicki, did you have a comment?
A couple things, and might help if Fletcher puts the aerial up showing Elkvale Road in the expansive right-of-way, so even if they are on that lot line or 10 feet back, there is a significant separation between the, the surface of the pavement versus the location of the sign. Thank you, Fletcher, that's very helpful. So, they would be on the, the right-hand side of their lot line, either 10 feet if they stay at the lower height, which might be beneficial, or, or raise the sign. I just wanted to remind the planning commission that this sign as proposed is in compliance with the sign code. If this property were not in a plan development, this would just be a sign permit. So, if you're going to deny this request, you need to be specific as to what criteria that you are charged with reviewing you feel is not being met in order to deny this. Also, in the past, the planning commission has approved signage for both schools and churches, viewing them somewhat differently, noting that they're not really advertisement, but they're more informational signs, and so, that's the nature of this sign as well.
Got it. Thank you, Vicki. Okay, any other comments or questions? Okay, the motion on the floor is to approve the major, major amendment to a plan development to allow a digital reader board sign, and there's, it also includes the stipulations that are in there. So, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
And, me too. So, no is Kim and Mike and myself. Oh, not Kim, sorry, Rachel, sorry. Rachel, Mike, and myself. Okay. We are at item 11. Hey, there you go. It's true.
Item 11 is a major amendment to a plan development to allow a nail salon in one of the existing strip malls out at Rushmore Crossing. We'll just get right into the slides. Maybe we'll get right into the slides. The property is Zoned General Commercial, and as you can see, all of Rushmore Crossing is in a plan development designation. The aerial of the property showing the existing commercial building. It's 8,000 square feet. Currently, there's a Starbucks, a Noodles &amp; Company, and a select Comfort. There's one empty suite, and they are proposing to place a nail salon. That suite is within this area right here. The future land use plan identifies the property appropriate for mixed-use commercial, and certainly, Rushmore Crossing shows a great development with mixed commercial uses. Major street plan showing Eglin as a collector's street, and of course, East-North Street as an arterial. This is a site plan that was provided by the applicant that is going to the numbers that are required for parking for this property as well as all of Rushmore Crossing, and we'll come back to some of this in just a moment. Looking at the existing structure, again, looking out on Eglin Street and the portion of Rushmore Crossing that's directly south. This was a picture taken about noon during the weekday, to give you an example of the parking that you see across the street. Looking west on Eglin Street, looking east. The applicant is requesting a major amendment to their plan development due to the number of parking requirements that are set forth by the regulations. Based on our requirement of providing three parking spaces per workstation within a salon, they would need to have 36 parking spaces for this suite. They do not believe it's going to operate that way, based on the client that they are leasing this tenant space to. They believe that they actually need 62 parking spaces. They currently have that number of parking on the site itself, but they recognize that there may be other times in, of uses in the balance of the suites that might raise those numbers up. In looking at what is available within the Rushmore Crossing parking complex, and, and that's this area here, all of that area that's on the north side of that long line of commercial buildings is a standalone plan development that is just general parking to be used by Rushmore Crossing. Please note that those properties that are located south of Eglin Street are in one united plan development, and their parking is determined as a shopping center district at 4.5 across the board. There are some lots within Rushmore Crossing, those on the north side being part of those, that are standalone lots. We look at the parking for those independently, and that's why the number of 92 parking spaces for this particular site is on the table today. It's been shown that there are 132 extra parking spaces within that parking complex that's not being required based on the 4.5 parking ratio for the Rushmore Crossing development complex. They are proposing to secure 30 spaces within that, that parking lot for employee parking for this lot. Staff looked at that and thought, you know, that, that is a viable solution, other than probably Black Friday and a couple other days, there's always ample parking out there within this area. Our concern, however, was how do we get pedestrians or employees across that street so that they are having safe passage? And we had determined in visiting with them that the best route would be to secure a pedestrian crossing at this location, noting that there is probably employees from some of these businesses on the north side already crossing Eglin Street. Has some of you ever been to some of the restaurants in this area in the evening? And because some of the commercial uses slow down in the evening, it, it, one may assume that the employees are parking on the south side of Eglin Street. The applicant has concurred and said, you know, that's probably something we need to do right now anyway, so they are working with public work staff as to the specific location and design to provide a pedestrian crosswalk that is ADA accessible, somewhat in this location as I've identified. Noting that our numbers for salons are, are very strict, and there probably is some differential between a hair salon and a nail salon, there is some flexibility in what is that actual parking calculation. But looking at the numbers that we're charged with implementing, it identifies that there's short 30 spaces. So, by placing those employees across the street, giving them a safe pedestrian crosswalk to handle this situation in probably an existing condition, staff is recommending that the major amendment to reduce the parking, the onsite parking, be approved with the 30 employee parking spaces being secured through a parking agreement on the property on the south side of Eglin and the pedestrian crosswalk being provided. If you've got questions for me, I'll try to answer them.
Okay. Any comments, questions for Vicki? Okay, John made a motion to approve the item?
I seconded.
And Galen seconded it? Okay, I do have a question, Vicki. Is there still a stipulation or a requirement in the codes that says if you're going to have parking for whoever it is, that it has to, especially employees, it has to be within so many feet of the property? And I remember once, you know, down on Main Street where the credit union wanted to use parking across, and they had to go to the corner and around, and it was too far, and they wouldn't allow that to be used because of the regulations, and I don't know if they're still in place or not.
They are. There's a requirement in the parking regulations that says that all required parking must be onsite, or if it's offsite, it can be no more than 300 feet measured by means of sidewalks from the area of the parking lot to the front door of the business. If they would have met that condition, they wouldn't have had to have done the major amendment.
Gotcha. So, this is to help alleviate that?
Correct.
Okay, good. Yeah, I, I'm supportive of what they're doing, I just wondered how that fit in, so.
Good question.
Okay, Mike?
Well, this, I, I, I've been to the Crossroad Mall, and that traffic is sometimes crazy. Has there been any discussion of looking at not only the crossro, crosswalks, but also the traffic in general, and maybe some lighting out there? Is that not something that we can even bring up as a, an option to stimulate some, some looking at that even deeper? Because I think this is going to come up more than just this time.
Madam Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
So, there was a traffic impact study submitted with the master plan for Rushmore Crossing, and there are triggers, warrants, that when met, there will be some of these entrances signalized. Ted, correct me if I'm wrong, but this pedestrian crosswalk, that location, is that one of the intersections that potentially could be signalized in the future when warrants are met? And I hate to put you on the spot like that.
I'm afraid I can't answer that. I did not go back and check. I do not believe. Where this building's at, I think it's farther to the west is the first signalized intersection, but I, I wouldn't swear to that without checking the study, and I apologize, I didn't go look at that at this time.
Thanks, Ted.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
So, obviously, the city's aware of the traffic that is in this area, too. It's a very successful commercial development, and we do traffic counts within our city as, as we see areas continue to build out, and just in existing streets throughout the city. When that warrant is met, then we will go back and, and visit with the developer to finalize where those signals should be and, and what level of responsibility is shared in getting those in place.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments or questions? I have to agree that this is a crazy place, the traffic goes every which way, and trying to get out, sometimes it's tough, so I worry a little bit about the employees trying to cross there, but I'm, I'm guessing that a lot of people cross anyway, you know, so. Okay, motion on the floor is to approve the major amendment to a plan development to allow a nail salon and to allow off-street, off-site part, employee parking. The motion is to approve with the stipulations. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, we are at discussion items. Are there any? No? Any, no staff items? Planning Commission items? Galen? And Rachel seconded it. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's passed, and the meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.